Okay, calling to order the Planning Commission meeting of January 4th. Where is Petra? Oh, and while we're waiting for her, a quick reminder, I was re-listening to one of the meetings to try and rehear some of the things we discussed at our April meeting, and we couldn't hear a thing. So I'm gonna, I've forgotten your name, our AV.
Neil.
Neil. Neil said, please talk, you know, we tend to lean back, please talk into your microphone so that anyone not here can hear you, and anyone who chooses to re-listen can hear you. And we're just waiting, where's Petra? Okay, I'll, you want to take it, you want me to take it? Okay, um, we'll do, I'm not alphabetical. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Schmersel.
Here.
Mr. Connolly.
Here.
I'm Hennessy, here.
Abner here.
And Ms. Devine is somewhere.
Tea.
Okay, Ms. Devine is present. Mr. Iwan is absent.
Here we go.
Okay, Petra, we called the roll, we're in order. Okay, first item, approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion changes on the minutes?
I gave some.
Okay.
Just minor stuff.
I have some minor stuff all to submit, but nothing.
Have you given it to Petra?
I will.
Okay, any changes, all right, do we have a motion to approve? We did have that, sorry. All in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Public comments, do we have any public comments?
Madam Chair, I'm members of the commission, my name is Mark Kramar, 81, Dungannon Hall. I just want to speak briefly about an agenda item that will be later, dealing with Ocean Park. First and foremost, I'm representing the Homeowners Association Board, and by extension, the members of the property owners at Ocean Park. We thank you for taking, under advisement, the request that we had made, I want to say maybe three or four weeks ago, to look at the zoning classification for the residential platted lots there. What I'd like to, if at all possible, when you come to that agenda item, to the extent that I could participate in some elements of the questions or discussion items, that would be good, rather than statum now.
That's fine.
But as I said, we wouldn't want the day to end without thanking you on behalf of the property owners for taking this under advisement so quickly. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, old business, Q and next update. The Q and next update, John's gonna talk to, just to let you know, we did have a workshop earlier this month, we've made a lot of progress in redoing the format of the plan, we didn't quite finish it, we had hoped to recommend at this meeting, but the new timeline is we will have a June 20th workshop, and by the end of this week, all the commissioners will have given to Ms. Tillerson their changes, she is then going to put it in a different document that Ms. Devine is going to work with, and we will have copies of that prior to the workshop, and hopefully we will wrap this up on June 20th.
I have nothing to add, outside of what you've shared, so.
Okay, okay, nothing else now. Okay, moving on, executive session, we need to go into executive session, I don't think it's gonna be a long one, okay, just for those in the audience, this shouldn't be long, can I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to state the purpose of this.
Just to clarify for you.
Yeah, it's to receive legal advice protected by the attorney-client privilege, you have to read the code, concerning pending litigation regarding case number 2025-CP-10-01844. We shall return, hopefully not too long. Everybody back? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to return to regular session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think I left my glasses in the room.
Are these?
There's a pair right here. Sorry about that. Okay, and no decisions were made, no votes were taken in the executive session. Moving on to new business, zoning text amendment AZ025- a bunch of zeros, for the comprehensive review of use regulation request.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, first text amendment that's before you is a zoning text amendment as stated, case number AZO 25-000004. This is a comprehensive amendment of Division III, our Use Regulation section, and as part of this, the idea is that we would look at the entire use section, which includes our use table, as well as the subsequent sections that address temporary uses, accessory uses, and the like. This exercise began with a subgroup of the Planning Commission members, Ms. Hennessy and Ms. Devine. The key factors of this proposed ordinance that you'll see that I'll highlight in the actual ordinance, it does eliminate several commercial or retail uses as a by right or conditional use from several of the zoning districts. Additionally, it removes residential uses from the CS, Community Support II zoning district. That parcel, we only have one parcel on the island that's subject to that zoning designation, which is off of Beach Walker Drive, that's the parcel of the headquarters for the Community Association. Additionally, it modifies the PR-OC zoning district to incorporate a conditional use reference, and that's essentially a condition that's been in the actual zoning designation already, and so it's just modifying from a by right designation to a conditional designation because of that condition that's listed in the PR-OC zoning district, and that's the parcel that's the Ocean Course, Ocean Course clubhouse. Additionally, it qualifies parking areas which are not specifically addressed in our current code with those that are associated with a proposed development, and so this would include parking facilities as a principal use, and this establishes now conditions regarding parking that ultimately stop, like, have cleaned up, we have existing parking lots on the island as sort of a primary use, with those not being subject to any standards, and so this would apply now a new, as a new category specifically for those. Additionally, a few modifications in two of the sections regarding accessory structures, and that's specifically fences and pools. Just so as you, a highlight for your reference and knowledge, the way the use regulations are broken down, it's by these three or four elements, one being a permitted use, that permitted use is a principal use that's allowed in the zoning district, it's identified by the letter P when we go to the actual use table. And the next one is a conditional use, this means, or identified by the letter C in that column, and this is only approved when certain conditions are identified and met by the applicant, in addition to the zoning permit being approved, so there's a higher threshold than just being a by right or permitted use, and then the final, which is subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals, special exception, this requires approval of certain criteria to be met, and again, that has to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So every use that's identified in our column, it would have one of these letters, if it does not, in a blank cell, that means that that use would be prohibited. So at this time, that's an overview of the ordinance, I won't, I will go through the actual text of the language to kind of share, if you would like any more questions regarding what's being proposed, we can do that, or we can open it up for discussion at this time.
John, why don't you just explain why the PD designation is completely removed, in case anyone has questions on that?
So the plan development designation that's highlighted to be scheduled for removal, plan developments essentially are a customized zoning district, and so opposed it being identified by use in this particular table, an applicant would identify the specific uses associated with that plan development, and so it being in this table served really no purpose as the plan development would spell out its specific uses depending on that application. For example, Freshfields Village, as we know, that's a plan development, where we sit today at Town Hall, that's a plan development, and those are two unique examples of specific plan developments, those uses are different, and so it being identified in this table, if you were to say, if you go to this, say, one CPD, well, which one would it correspond to, would it correspond to the town, would it correspond to this, so it's kind of obsolete of being in this table.
The other thing I think worth your expounding on a little bit is the parking lots, because we went back and forth on this, I was initially against, we got rid of parking garages, didn't like that at all as an added section, but parking lots is in here, and I'd like you to talk about it and see if other commissioners have issues or questions on that.
So, one of the conditions, well, one of the uses that has been added in red line form is parking facilities, attached to that is conditions, and I highlight it now, which is in front of you, Section V of the one, section 103, which is the conditions of use, and specifically, the purpose here is to define, or at least identify, that any parking facilities would be subject to the standards of our minimum parking standards in section 128. So whereas today, if a new development was to come on, online, they're required to meet minimum parking standards, so that's automatically attached to that development associated with either square footage, number of rooms, et cetera. The concern that staff has is that there are parking areas that have been programmed over time through the history of the formerly exited development agreements, and even probably prior to then, where there are parking areas that are not to standard, and so if there are opportunities in the future to bring those to standard, this would allow us to have standards on whether it be buffering, appropriate sizing, materials, of pervious elements in that, this allows us to have standards around them, so this isn't inviting open parking lots across the island, it's putting in parameters for us to have standards around parking lots.
Would this apply to, oh, sorry, I'm just talking loud at home, would this apply to both new and existing parking facilities, so like a regime parking lot, would they have to comply with this?
A regime parking lot would be attached to that particular development, so this is a parking lot, this would not be subject, so this would be a principal parking area as a primary use, so.
Standalone parking.
They standalone parking, so.
Like Cinder Creek?
Yeah, so, let's just say if there was a new parking area to be established, then now we would identify, and going back to the use table itself, the only areas where there would be permissible as a, as a, as used are under certain zoning designations, which all fall under either the resort or commercial designations, and our PR, our Parks and Recreation category, so whereas today, we have some of these technically that are in our Parks and Recreation zoning districts, the area that's adjacent to the Station 6 on Ocean Course Drive, that's Senshe Lot, that's a parking area, think about it this way, we don't know what the number of count of parking vehicles that could occur in that lot, right? So a new facility, we would want to be able to make sure that there's a proper spacing and proper standards around future parking, that is established.
I had a question about the thinking behind specifically calling out pervious, and, you know, particularly in light of the last conversation we had on pervious, wouldn't that be kind of a consideration if a new lot were to be created? I mean, I can't imagine, this is not a commentary on pervious versus non-pervious, but why specifically call out that attribute?
It's the direction that we thought that we were removing as staff, and so we collectively have said, we think that it's in the best interest of the community to move forward with pervious elements. Staff's position that we've had a lot of back and forth on the actual, like I said, not pervious, non-pervious versus pervious, but I think it's the information, intel that we've had collected overall, we think pervious is a solution. At the grand scheme of things, areas of large parking areas, we would not want to increase the impervious coverage for just, where there is no opportunity to decrease that elsewhere, but nonetheless.
Just wondering if this was the appropriate place to make that statement?
I'm wondering as well, is it more, do we require some sort of stormwater management for it, rather than requiring, you know, pervious material?
That's pleasure to commission, I mean, if you guys would not prefer it to be pervious and would prefer it to be, I mean, like I said.
It's not a statement either way, it's just, you know, you're calling out one particular element of design of the lot, and that was what caught my attention.
Isn't retroactive to any existing certain lots that are on the island?
An existing lot would be essentially non-conforming as any other structure.
Any other questions? We haven't moved this, have we? We need to move the, we need to move the, the agenda item for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Are you comfortable with the wording?
To me, it feels overly specific, and again, it's not a question about any judgment on pervious versus non-pervious, it just feels like, you know, there's less flexibility to make a decision that's right for that new lot in the future.
I completely would Sandy on this one, I think.
I think that makes sense.
Yep.
Yep, would you change the wording?
If you would just make a motion to eliminate the second sentence, parking facilities shall be of the pervious material as approved by the planning director.
So moved.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, do we want to, I don't think we want to, we want to substitute wording instead of pervious, we don't want to take the whole thing out, we just want to change the wording from pervious surfaces to.
Parking facilities shall meet the town's stormwater requirements, can we?
It would already have to meet any, like, it would be duplicative to put that section into this right here, so.
We just need to strike, just need to strike.
You could just say best practices.
Yeah, I mean, we could, but.
Then current.
Keep it simple, maybe?
I'd move to strike then.
Comfortable with that, John?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to strike.
To amend.
Motion to amend.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Just because there has, that there would be an independent clause there as approved, you can just eliminate that entire sentence. You can eliminate that entire sentence because the second half of that wouldn't have.
Yes, yes, eliminate the whole sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, are we finished with that one? No, we got a, first, or any further discussion? Okay, I have further discussion. On this item? Oh, not on this item. This is an amendment. Got it. Okay, so there's amendment on the floor.
So you got to vote on the, yeah, motion to amend first, and then you vote on the underlying motion after that.
So any further discussion on Sandy's motion on section V? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, the amendment passes, Mary Beth, do you have something else?
I just, on U, just above there, where we have added and ride-share zones, don't we also want to include and ride-share zones in design and location of bus passenger stands and ride-share zones shall only be approved after completing the site plan, don't we need that verbiage in there as well?
Yeah, that could be added for clarification.
Yeah. Just above where we were, so same page, I mean, on U versus V.
Say that again?
Yeah.
We've listed in. We've listed in, in U, we're on page 17, transportation, bus passenger stands, and ride share zones. And then, we go on to say-
Oh, I see.
The design and location of bus passenger stands and ride share zones.
You're right.
I think we need to have there as well.
We, yes, she's right. Good catch. Would you like to make a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend, this is, gosh, I don't even know the, well, you, but I don't know where it is in the whole thing.
Just say you on the-
On you and in the-
Conditional uses.
Yes, what Joanne said. Following the design and location of bus passenger stands, we should add and ride share zones.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, the amendment passes. Thank you, Mary Beth, for catching that. Okay, any further discussion on the agenda item as a whole, the permitted use table? Any other?
I, I think we do, sorry, guys.
No, go for it.
I'm the devil in the details here. On page 19, it's carry, it's 5A, it carries over from page 18.
Yeah.
The fence, so I'm at the very end of Section A. The fence or other enclosure height shall be four feet. Do, and this is a question, do we mean it has to be exactly four feet? Or do we mean a minimum of four feet?
Oh, good question, John.
So, this section refers to what's being married in our building code to reflective of enclosures for pools safety.
Yep.
Ideally, it could be higher than five feet. I think, practically, it can be higher than four feet. Ideally, you probably won't see-
Don't we mean it should not be less than four feet?
So, it should be a minimum of four feet?
Yes, exactly.
So, should we add a minimum?
I think that we need to do that.
Do we need a range on it then? You don't want to need-
Well, the code, I think you can't go beyond five.
You can go beyond, but it, it's a zoning, I don't want to cross the zoning, the zoning ordinance with our building code, even though if, if there's design aesthetics that you're worried about going higher than four or five feet, that's what I would want you to consider. And I think that's the reason why it was no more than five previously.
I'm pretty sure other places, it's a maximum of five, that you can have a fence. If my understanding from other work I've been doing, it's a maximum of five. I don't think you'd want it less than four from a safety standpoint. But I, if we're going to name it, I think we've got to be precise in how we name it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. What I'm stating is that if you want a height not to exceed, I think you should include that in this. That's what I'm saying.
I think we should have four to five feet, or between four and five feet.
Okay, a minimum of four and a maximum of five?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with that, I just think we need to-
I, I think a minimum of four meets, would, would address the-
Would be sufficient?
Would be sufficient.
Okay, so then, let's, I make a motion to add a minimum of four feet there.
Second?
Second.
Any further, any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment to add a minimum of four, minimum of before four feet? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Hearing none. Another good catch, Ms. Marshall, thank you. Further discussion on this item?
Yep. One last question. If we move on to Section C of 5, what exactly does this mean? Fences taller than three feet from pavement shall not be located within a site triangle. I don't understand that.
Where, what, can you?
I'm, I'm moving on down, I, I'm good with B. I'm confused in the middle of Section C.
Page 19?
Yep, still on page 19. We haven't gone very far.
I'm looking for-
I'm down mid-paragraph.
Fences, fences taller than three feet from pavement shall not be located within a site triangle.
What do we mean by that?
So, this is the area, I think of adjacent to a street or a corner where so that you would still be able to have vision-
Impeding sightline? Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Anything else? So, we are voting on the amended permitted use regulations. No other discussions, all in favor of approving the, the use regulations as amended? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, moving on. Item two is communication towers. Request to amend Section 12-103. Do we have a motion to approve this? We have to move it, and then we discuss it.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in, okay, excuse me, now we go into discussion of the communication towers. Oh, do you want to do a presentation first? Okay, fine.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Well, staff will do a short presentation on our next case, the proposed zoning text amendment for Case AZO25-000005 in regards to communications towers. The request is, in general, to modify the standards. The highlights are of which to have a height limit on all towers, on cell towers on Kewa up to 150. And anything above 150 has a specific procedural requirements. I'll give a brief timeline on how we got here today. Staff was tasked with observing towers, gathering information on current towers late last year. Since then, staff presented a short video to the town council in December, where we showed current towers, heights of those current towers, and the status of those towers, what the carriers are, and kind of what issues we're dealing with currently. Since then, staff and work groups have been working with the providers, cell providers, the tower owners on Kewa to work through these issues and potentially see some solutions to our problems that we're experiencing today. So, we've had a couple of stakeholder meetings with Kika, with these tower owners, with multiple carriers. Again, we're still having work groups, stakeholder, and staff has been going back and forth weekly with, with all of these groups. Recently, on May 1st, we have received a recommendation from the infrastructure, the town's infrastructure and public works committee. That, that recommendation supports the 150-foot tower heights. And follows, is a, and because of this recommendation, it's, because of that 150 height is due to the Kewa's tremendous tree canopy. Here's a short summary of, of those recommendations. Another one of those recommendations is to allow for up to four cellular providers on towers, so we can have up to four carriers, one at 120, one at 130, one at 140, and one at 150. We also have received several public comments in regards to this ordinance change. A couple from American, American Tower, which is the big provider at Kestrel Court, and then a couple from Crown Castle. A comment we received specifically from a tower company was this one you see on your slides here. This is in addition to Section 12-103, in number six. They suggested, consistent with the intent of reducing the number of towers needed through a policy of encouraging co-location, the replacement and upgrade of an existing tower does not implicate the same land use policy considerations as new infrastructure. Accordingly, the applicant may request a waiver from the planning director for any of these provisions for replacement of a structure on or near an existing site for which there is already an existing land use approval. In short, this was more of a, they want to, the tower operators and owners want to be able to drop and swap a tower more easily. Instead of going through the whole process again and again, they want to have a, a potential drop and swap case. So, planning staff generally supports this provision, but we do suggest these two additions to it. These two additions are at the bottom. And they state, the waiver request to the planning director shall be submitted for review, no sooner than 15 days prior, or to, to, or simultaneously with a site plan review application. And number two, should a waiver be submitted, the planning director may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the waiver request.
Can we ask questions now, or do you want to wait?
Let him finish.
Ask him while we're going.
Okay. When you say drop and swap, do you mean like-for-like? Or do you mean if, if now, there's 150-foot, kind of, what's the right word? Ability to build up to that, would it be a situation where you have a smaller tower and you can swap in a bigger tower, and it just goes through planning commission? Or it goes through planning director?
Yep.
Yeah, but in the same spot.
Because they don't want to take the tower down, because-
But it could be a taller tower on that spot.
Yeah, you got a tower here, you're going to put a new tower here, then you're going to take the old one down.
The language in here is vague in to allow a taller tower or a shorter tower to be, be able to drop and swap. It doesn't say it has to be this-
In that particular site with only staff approval?
Correct. So, that it gives our planning director kind of leeway in to say, you know, he may approve it, approve it with conditions or deny it. But it's, it's, it can be taller or smaller. But if, if it's generally in the same location, that's kind of what the drop and swap intent is.
Would that impact any of the public, no, I'm sorry. Would that impact any of the public notice, right? So, if you're putting, if you're going with a 60-foot tower and you're going up to 150, I know there were balloon tests and other things, so the neighbors could see what it's going to look like, would that still be required with this language? Or would this circumvent that?
So, it would be up to the planning director to add it as a condition. This waiver request would more or less grant them ability to, to proceed with their application if the planning director says so. Unless there's a condition added.
I've got a whole bunch of issues with this.
If, if I can add, the provision for the drop and swap is a waiver request. So, this would be coming from the applicant. The applicant would be asking specifically, we feel like, because of it being a drop and swap, we feel like we don't need to do X provision in the, in the code. So, we're, staff is not advocating that all of the conditions, as you're saying, a balloon test would be evolved. It would just be whether or not we feel that the waiver request would be approved or denied. So that the onus is on the applicant to determine a full application. And if they, if they feel that the drop and swap meets certain metrics where it's equivalent or similar, where they don't have to do the, every single item in the request, then that would be coming from them.
Let's zoom out a little before we get into the weeds, because I have no problem with drop and swap. I was involved in the meetings with the, the carriers. And I went around with the public works people to all of the towers. And we floated a drone up to 120 and 150 to get an idea. So, first, I want to back, I sent you all that tower height thing, which wasn't part of the package, because I think it's important. Let's back up, let's look at the facts. Fact, we have some coverage on the island. There are gaps, we need to approve, improve it. I think there's general agreement on that. The, the coverage we currently have, we have five stealth towers, one antenna, and one steel tower. I personally have no problem getting rid of stealth towers. Stealth towers, I, I gather these were built over, it's 15-year-old technology. They're wood clad, you got all the guts inside the towers. It's not efficient, it's difficult to maintain. In the current environment, it probably doesn't make sense to have stealth towers. So, we're looking at monopoles. And, yeah, they're not attractive. They're galvanized, and they have the circular arrays that everybody sees as they drive around everywhere. So, they're, they're going to be cell towers on the island. The question is, what do we need to do? Our goal is to have good coverage on the island. Let's look for, first, Ocean Park is an area of concern. Anecdotally, I've talked to a lot of people out there, if you have AT&amp;T, you're fine. If you have Verizon, you have problems. And you look at who's on which tower, they're all co-located. Co-location, you know, they talk about a lot in the regulation, but of course, you're going to co-locate on towers because each T-Mobile and AT&amp;T and Verizon are not going to have their own towers. You have one tower, and you have all of them at different heights. Let's forget about the fourth guy. There is no fourth provider on here now, and it's not the role of this commission to worry about whether or not there's going to be a fourth provider. I don't think that's our role here. And I wouldn't add height to a tower for that potential eventuality. We currently have the Ocean Course Tower, which AT&amp;T does cover, apparently, anecdotally, good ocean course coverage, is currently a 70-foot tower with the AT&amp;T at 60 feet. And AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, and we have a T-Mobile person here, maybe they'll want to talk about that. It's a stealth pole. So, those are facts. What we don't know, and, and what I frankly asked the public works committee, so I'm a little surprised this has come to us at this point, is we need a little bit more data. If we were to change that stealth pole to a monopole, what would the coverage? I'm not suggesting that at 60 feet, or 70 feet. What would the increased coverage be? We don't know. If we go to 120, which is the stealth pole allowance in the regulation, that's almost a 50-foot percent increase of the current tower height. If we were to do that with changing from stealth to monopole, then you'd have one at 120, 110, 100. The lowest one would still be 40 feet higher than the current coverage. And it would be in a monopole versus a stealth. How much additional, what's, how much additional coverage can that be? The only coverage map that was shown to us was when Verizon did their presentation, and they had these circles and showed, and, and because they're not in Ocean Park at all, you know, their current coverage is very low. They said, here's what it would be at 120, and here at 150, and they were just circles. But the diminishing return set in significantly between 120 and 150. So, to more than double the height of the Ocean Park Tower, I have some concerns about. I think we're way premature to put a 150 number in there. We do not have the data to support that, okay? So, I think, I, I really don't, I don't think this is, is ready for, for prime time. There are, so the 150 was an issue. The fourth carrier is a non-starter because it's not relevant. Why would we even have a sentence in there recommending three carriers? The cellphone tower man, people aren't going to put up a big tower for one guy. They're already co-located. If they put up a big tower, all three are going to want to be on it. And the newer technology is going, it's going to be above the tree canopy, I think. And maybe you guys know, I, I, when we went out to look at the Osprey Tower, which is all of total 97, that one looked to be above the tree canopy already. So, 120 is going to get us above the significant tree canopy. There was, the balloon thing, you have to do, I wouldn't want to give discretion on that for the neighbors, you know. I mean, in our other town, my last town where we did this, you had a balloon up so people could see exactly what you're talking about. And I think people understand that it's not going to be the most attractive thing. They're going to understand, they're going to see it more than they did before. But there's also a desire for better cellphone coverage. So, our job here is to balance all that. Other comments?
I guess my comment would be, I, I think the aesthetic part of this was dismissed much too quickly for a lot of people, for me in particular. And I think that the, what you said about the stealth poles, when I went around to look at these, I was really surprised at what some of those stealth poles looked like. And I was glad that they were not visible, because some of them are in really bad shape.
They look like old industrial-
And they're all peel, it seemed to be peeling or whatever. But I couldn't imagine- But I couldn't imagine extending them up another 50, 60 feet. So, so I would agree with that. I agree with your comment about it's not our job to make room for another provider. And, and I wonder, is it necessary to move forward with all of these? Should we not try one?
Well, I think the, the thing is, they said three. I think, in reality, they're not, the tower companies aren't going to put 120-foot towers at all of these locations.
Right. No, I, I saw the part about three, but wouldn't it make sense to just try one, and to see what it, see what it might look like, see what the reaction is from the public as to two or three? Is that okay?
Fix one in Ocean Park for Verizon, then, yeah.
Go ahead, if you had something.
I had a lot of issues with the language. It wasn't very clear even, the first, well, the third paragraph on page one about the heights. I mean, they were talking about 150 feet for this and that, 120 for that, and they, you know, there's wording in there about on buildings. I mean, when it's on a building, it's not going to be 120 feet. There's no way, and we don't want that. I mean, it should be, there should be language about the height limitation on a building, too, like the height of the building plus the parapet, or whatever screening mechanism would be needed. But, I mean, that was just, there just needs to be much more detail about how you're going to handle these situations.
And I, I think, are you finished? I, I think what I would, what I would find terribly helpful would be understanding what we're getting. I mean, you went into that a bit with, you know, the, what the improvement in coverage is, and what we could expect over the next handful of years in terms of, as the island grows, and you're, there are more people here, what do we need for five years out and 10 years out to make sure we've got good coverage across the island? So, I guess it's not going to be pretty regardless. So, I would hate to get all this figured out and then be looking at it again in two years or three years, because we didn't accommodate what we really need. So, don't want it to be ugly, but I also want to make sure we have a good end result.
Yeah, I think, from what I got out of the meetings with the cellular providers, was that the technology we have right now is really old, and this, what, what they were looking to put on, and would the T-Mobile person like, would you like to comment? I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
No, I wanted to address a few of the points, and, that were regarding the actual text of the ordinance, as well as, I think, the intent of where the committee's sort of direction of how we got to this, this particular recommendation. I'll start with Mr. Ryan's comments regarding the tower height. So, the provision for the tower height is split into essentially two categories, because the, the stealth tower provision was a 120-foot height, and that would have given the ability to have it approved if it did not exceed that 120-foot height, if it being a stealth design. Because the recommendation was to move away from stealth design, we were wanting to make sure that there was some provision for those not to exceed, not to exceed number. Regarding the buildings, there are, our stealth provision doesn't just apply to a pole, it also applies to those that are placed on a building. So, that's, that's why the incorporation of the building height and having credentials, or not credentials, but metrics to allow for us to understand what the height of that tower was would be being placed on a building. We know that the building would still be subject to our, our zoning standards of height maximum. So, the provisions for the stealth tower, it also incorporates any tower that would be placed on a building, similar to what's placed on the top of the Sanctuary Hotel. There was one question, I think, regarding the, let me back up. I think, the overall 150, because I think the question I'm hearing, or comments that I'm hearing, whether the 150 is too tall. And that recommendation is directly parallel to what was provided in the feedback from all of the providers, which married to that. There is a heavy, heavily focus to Mr. Connolly's perspective regarding the aesthetics. There was definitely a heavily focus by the subcommittee members, those of the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee, of this being a public safety priority. There are a number of our first responders, our staff, who are unable to get cer, certain areas, we included that. So, that, that was really their primary focus of ensuring that this is addressing a public safety need. And so, that's why maybe the, the height is not as...
But we don't have data that a lower height wouldn't solve, our, solves that problem.
I'm sorry?
We don't have any data that a lower height wouldn't solve that problem.
Yeah, so part of...
Given how good the cover, relative to the fact that we have 15-year-old technology and a bunch of short poles, we have pretty good coverage on this island. There are significant gaps to be addressed, but it's not horrible.
I also want to add that it's not just about cell coverage. So, that's the other component. It's not just what, that you can pick up your phone and have service. This is a broader approach to this ordinance. I do see our Infrastructure and Public Works Chair here, who may want to add any comments to that, that recommendation provided from...
Is that related to the type of coverage we have, 4G, 5G?
5G, correct. Yes, so...
So, the tower height that we currently have can't accommodate the new bands of service that are out there?
Correct.
Well, the stealth towers, I mean, you've got everything.
It's enclosed.
Yeah, but, so the question is, if you just open it up, you're going to be able to put that on there at any time.
I know, Mr. Height, Lance Spencer, 40 Sunlight Ben, but as Mr. Taylor said, I'm actually here in my town council role as the Chair of the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee. Sorry, I'm a little late, I got held up at the DMV. But I, I do want to answer your question first, Chairman, Chairman Hennessy. The recommendation was for two things. One, to raise the, allowed tower height for 250 feet. The second one was to remove the perceived or real restriction about stealth. This is based off of industry best practices. You may know, I'm a former senior executive with one of the cellular companies. So, I've overseen dozens of towers being built, and I've seen the internal process that goes on as they capitalize and invest in infrastructure. The problem we have at Kiowa, as, as Mr. Taylor was talking about, is not just voice calls. It's, we don't have modern broadband cellular wireless coverage on Kiowa, that most of the rest of the country has. You, you talk about being able to connect not only voice calls and, and drop calls, which frankly has happened to me a lot, myself, just this week, talking to people across different carriers, but it's mobile broadband as well. The applications on your smartphones, the applications that first responders are carrying, the public safety considerations. Every so often, IQA lights up about Comcast Xfinity outages. Their only choice right now, modern cellular broadband creates a second choice, instead of using a coax or a fiber to backhaul from your house Wi-Fi system. Cellular now has options, I think, Mr. Babanek has that, where your, your Wi-Fi in your house actually backhauls over cellular. As far as data, we've spent the last six months with the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee examining this issue, meeting with the carriers several times, each of them, and the tower companies. Staff has put a lot of time into this as well. This data is based off of those companies' experiences, fielding coverage in areas like Kiowa and other places, times tens of thousands of towers across the United States. There's a ton of data, as far as where they do their modeling and how they come up with their recommendations. I'll tell you from being inside the, the process in one of these companies, this is their money. They're paying for this. They're paying for monitoring infrastructure at Kiowa. It doesn't cost Kiowa money. But they are not going to overbuild. The engineers come up with a solution for, for the next generation of whatever they want to do in particular sites. They take it in, the chief financial officer has a heyday on it. They optimize this to the point so that they're not spending a penny more than they need to spend. So, if they're recommending this, it's based off of the nationwide data they've got of what it takes to do the job right. So, it's, it's, it's really bankable, I think. I shared a town council yesterday, one anecdote that's come out of talking to all of them, to be honest, is that for many years, they've not invested in Kiowa. There, there's been very little done. And, and the sentiment is, Kiowa's too hard. We make it too hard for them to do that. So, what we're really trying to do is make it so that they will invest in Kiowa, they will bring the services to bring modern capabilities to us, and be able to provide our residents and our visitors, and our first responders, the capability they need.
Lance, you and I have talked about this, but I'll ask it again. If we had heights at 120, what would the coverage be? Because Kiowa is not, we're an island, we're not like all around the country.
Somebody's going to be in the trees, and, and they won't have good coverage.
There's, if it's at 120, 110, 100?
It's, it's too low for the lowest person. They wouldn't be recommending 150 if they didn't need 150.
Well, the numbers are round numbers. If we were in the metric system, they might have been, you know, they'd pick a round number in meters.
Not necessarily.
You know, we talked about this from the coverage map that Verizon showed us, that, you know, given how the coverage is now, with horrible old technology tucked inside stealth towers, and the towers are relatively short, we have a level of coverage.
A small level of coverage.
We don't see the, can you address this a little? I'm going to ask the T-Mobile guy to speak, if you may.
I cannot address it any better than the council member did. I will add...
Introduce yourself, please, and tell us...
Jonathan Yates, 105 Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Thank you for having me.
But tell your role, who, who you are.
I'm, I'm an outside counsel for T-Mobile.
Okay, you're the lawyer, okay.
This ordinance is very...
Anytime we have a deal with cell towers, he's involved. I've worked with him before, too.
I'm the bad penny. I know a lot about Kiowa. I started coming here in 1968. I was fortunate enough that I had some friends that had a house on Eugenia, and I spent the month of July from '68 forward. My parents bought their first house on Eugenia in '76, they built their second house on Eugenia in '78. Wow, wow. I, I grew up, Denny Royal was a good family friend, I was able to ride the island in the Jeep with, with Mr. Royal. So, it's wild to be back here now and see all this, to see a Kiowa Town Hall. Mark and I were talking about it earlier. In the old days, there was the bar across, before the bridge, and you had the key to unlock it.
Can I focus you a little bit?
Yeah, I will, I will. I will compress. The council member laid it out beautifully. We need the 150 feet. Quite frankly, we want to maximize for the island, we want to bring the island what they deserve, 21st century wireless infrastructure. We, you get into this fight about heights, what is the beauty of Kiowa? The beauty of Kiowa is the incredible tree cover. It's the incredible tree cover. For those of us in the industry, what's the problem? The tree cover eats up signal. We need the height. When you were talking about three or four carriers, there is a fourth carrier coming. That is Dish Boost Wireless, with the merger of Sprint and T-Mobile, Certain Spectrum had to be divested. It was a very, very important to the feds that there be a fourth carrier. So, eventually, you will get a fourth carrier. The goal of the industry and the council member, he put it beautifully. They want to deliver the best infrastructure to you and your constituents possible at the least cost. What's that mean? This is positive for Kiowa. They don't want towers in every single neighborhood. They don't want towers here, there, and yonder. They want to maximize the assets they have, do the least number of assets, assets that everyone can co-locate on, and provide the service to you. 120 to 150, I talked about seeing this ordinance before. The basis of this ordinance, I actually knew it very well, because it's, it was the Charleston County Ordinance that I helped draft in 1998, 1999, with Bill Miller, the then-planning director of Charleston County. What's interesting in your present ordinance, there is no height limit. There's a height limit for stealth, but there is no height limit right now for cell towers. For standard cell towers, you, you do not have a height limit at present. What this is doing, after a lot of work, and I'm coming in late in the game, the council members spent a lot of time with folks, a lot of folks have spent time with John and other committee members, the 150 works. I don't think we should get into debate about height. What we want to do is deliver the service in the best way for the island, and that's at 150.
Let me ask you this. We got a, a public comment from American Towers, since they're the ones building the tower.
Yeah.
And they do not let, where's it, I just had it. They, they don't, they don't think requiring design for four carriers makes sense for them, and they're the tower builders.
I think you just have to plan for the future. I think you have to plan for the future.
You know, I mean, I, again, from, anecdotally, from residents on this island, we've got a choice of three carriers, and I think most residents would say, "That's plenty, I'd rather sacrifice a fourth carrier for lower tower heights." You know, we don't need a four, I mean, maybe there'll be a fourth, maybe there'll be 10, I don't know, but we're, we're kind of happy with the three we've got.
Well, and, and again, that's about choice. That is about choice, if Dish Boost, Dish Boost, I can't even say that.
Here, here, it's, here's the sentence they said. "In the Section 12, the new tower to build to be designed to accommodate four carriers, in practice, this provision would almost certainly result in inefficient and undesirable outcomes. For example, this provision would require tower companies to over-engineer tower structures for hypothetical carriers that may never collate on-site." If the tower builder's telling us this...
Isn't that a maximum? I mean, in essence, you know, to, I think, your point earlier, the tower companies are going to be, they're going to be driven by the economics of the build, right? And so, I don't think they would be driven just because to build up to a maximum, correct?
Well, what I'm saying is, they're telling us we shouldn't have in our regulation to require four...
If I can put that letter in perspective, American Tower is not the tower builder that we're talking about right now. They're the competitor for the tower builder.
You're talking about Crown?
Crown is, it's what doing, it's what doing. So, they have got one tower, and it's at 165, by the way. So, I question a little bit what they are saying, since their tower's at 165.
And a quick question for you. If, right now, we have, oh, sorry, I keep moving back. The tallest tower we have is 173, and then the others are all right at 100 or below. Sorry. If we were to raise the tower height, does that, is there any way correlate that to maybe needing fewer towers?
Yes.
Yes, that was my question, too.
But that gets to a question I had. Are we, at this point, assuming that these are going to be the locations for the towers?
Well, I think there aren't that many undeveloped plots on Kiowa where you can plop a tower, which is why the, the drop and swap makes sense, because there's a tower there now. So, if you're going to build a new tower, it makes sense, whether you need to put it at all six, not counting the Sanctuary, six locations, maybe you pick Ocean Park, Vanderhoos, Cougar, you know, or something.
What is the process to make those decisions? Because that seems to be, I mean, to me, that's, you know, having kind of a committed, or at least a proposed, set of sites, that's an important part of the, of the process here. You know, right now, five of the seven current sites are resort sites. You know, is the resort on board with, you know, continuing to build out those five sites to the new height standards?
Roger, would you, would you come to the, come to the mic, please?
Or could those be eliminated if we have taller towers in other locations?
It's as important to know where and the specifics of the plans as it is the height.
Tell us on this...
I'm Roger Warren, I'm president of the Kiowa Island Golf Resort, and those towers are on our property. We're happy to have them, and we'll continue to if you build it to 150 feet. I'm just kidding, I want to support the 150. So, yeah, I think that we're a logical solution to that, because it's on, on land, that's at golf courses, it's not in a position that we're ever really going to need it for something else. And I think the most salient thing that I heard was, this isn't going to cost any of us any money. It's the cell tower company putting those up, and I, I think the conversation about cost controls and financial effectiveness for the companies is probably the single thing that makes this make sense. Now, I understand that this is, for a lot of people, it's about seeing a cell tower on the island, among the trees and so forth. Right now, they pretty well blend, but that's why our service isn't very good. And we have not really had Verizon on the ocean course. We just started working with Crown to put up a tower for Verizon, and this process would allow us to combine it on the other tower. So, I, because if you have Verizon, which we used to have as a resort, and the, the coverage out there was so poor, that we went to T-Mobile, and we've been very happy with that. So, I think that that's, that speaks to the quality of that service. I think that you're really faced with a choice, and you... I think that you're really faced with a choice, and you all have said it. It's, what's the priority here? Do you want to improve coverage for now and in the future, and this will do it? And is that going to outweigh how important it is to have the aesthetics of a lower tower? Madam Chairman, I think you made a good question, and I haven't really heard anybody answer it. I probably think logically what the answer will be, could it be as good at 120 feet as it is at 150? I think the answer is no. But what's the difference? What's the difference between 150 feet and 120 feet? If it's a marginal difference, then you move closer to an aesthetic decision, if it is a significant. And like you said, we don't know where it's going in the future. I'd hate to think that we make a change now and have to come back and make a change in the future because we need it to be higher. So that's why they're paying you the big bucks right now, to get here and make this decision, so.
Yeah. I mean, we did float the drone up at all the sites, and 150 is really high. I mean, it's doubling, more than doubling, your ocean course tower. I mean, you look at that tower and put another tower on top of it, I don't know how your front nine lane people and...
They're more disturbed with the buildings built on the first hole, so that's nothing to do with the tower.
And actually, Ocean Park people have told me that the stealth towers really ugly. It looks like a remnant from an old manufacturing site. So I think people will be okay looking at a galvanized pole. We're used to seeing them.
And when you look at the one that's at Sorrel Rail, I think it's Sorrel Rail, that 173 feet one?
Yep.
You know, and when you're on a beach, you can see that, but you inevitably turn back to the beach and look at that and the water, and that's just an afterthought at that point. You can make it a focal point if you want to, and you want to try to create a situation where this doesn't work. I think the benefit outweighs anything about the height in terms of the quality of the service to everybody. So I personally would just encourage you to go to the 150 and move on.
Well, if we could get the answer to the question, the marginal from 120 to 150, because 120 is almost doubling what we've got now.
When we get that answer, though, I don't think we can, we also need to ask the question, will they build it at 120? Is it worth the investment at 120 versus 150?
Thank you.
I think we've already got the answer to that question, which is, they haven't. And they're not going to.
Exactly.
There, that's a lot of money. It's about $10 million to do this, and they're not going to spend the money on it the way the circumstances are now. We've seen that.
Yeah. Just to give a sense of scale, the toilet paper, as you're going, as the crosstown route ends and you're headed on, how tall is that?
Which one?
You know, if you're, if I'm headed from Kiowa through, yeah, right before you get to the new Copper River Bridge, the toilet paper, yeah, how tall is that guy?
I have no idea.
I think it's between 180 and 190.
Okay, taller than 150.
120, 120.
Oh, then you just look it up. Okay, it's 120.
There's nothing else around it, right?
Well, it's also in a very open space. There's, I mean, there's nothing around it. It's highly exposed. That's why it got so much attention.
Toilet paper tower, that's what we call it.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have any information from the real estate people that would tell us what, if any, impact these towers have on a property value?
That's a good question.
Because I know personally, if I was driving down my street, or if I was with a realtor driving down a street, that I was going to look at a 150-foot tower, I would tell him to turn around and go somewhere else. So, but that may be just me.
I can address that.
I would just be curious.
I was actually down in Volusia County, Florida, yesterday, where I listened to an appraiser from that county who had studied four towers in Volusia County at length, and no diminution whatsoever. He also did interviews. People want the infrastructure. People want their infrastructure. Keep in mind, at 150 feet, these will not have to be air nav illuminated. 200 feet is the level in this country. Above 200, you have to put the red and white lights on for the aircraft. So you see throughout the state, in the urban areas, we typically have an ordinance requiring 199-foot towers. They want them lower than illumination. In the rural areas, you're allowed to go higher. You take it down to 150, yes, there's the pole. Yes, you can see it. If you can't see it, it does. If you can't see it at night, it doesn't have the flashing lights. And what does it do? It provides the infrastructure now and for the future, and that's what we're trying to do. And 150, it's a pretty de minimis height. The city of Charleston is a city where horses have to wear diapers. They have a regulation for everything, and staff approval in the city of Charleston is up to 160. It only goes to their Board of Zoning Appeals if it's over 160. So this is a fair height. It can accommodate folks, and it can deliver what your people want. They want 21st century infrastructure? This will do it. You will not have to revisit it every three years as the capacity changes, technology changes. This is an ordinance for the future.
In part, John, to, you know, to address your concern about residential impacts, if in fact the resort is committed or open to having these towers continue to be built there, that's a different story than thinking about putting them into residential areas.
The one that struck me was when I drove out this weekend to, I had never really seen the one out at the ocean course.
Oh, yeah.
And it struck me, driving down Front Nine Lane, that you can already see it. It's not a lot above the trees, but you can already see it. And my reaction was, when I looked at this and said, that's a 70-foot tower, I just can't imagine it 80 feet higher, and the reaction of people living in Ocean Park.
I live in West Beach. I see Kestrel Court, and, you know, to the earlier point, it becomes part of what you see. And every time I see that, I'm happy that I have Verizon, because I'm right there. I get good coverage. You know, I think that's a trade-off. People, I don't think we can have it both ways.
And if I can just add that, I've looked at that tower also from the Front Nine. If you step into people's driveways, you don't see it anymore. It's only as you're driving in.
I could say, it's just, that for me is just a personal thing. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, but that's just my view.
Has Berkeley weighed in on this, since they own the Vanderhoest?
We're in parallel with the planning staff, working through what will be the first upgrade, which will be the ocean course site, because of, as the discussion's been about Verizon having no coverage there. This will be a process. They're going to have to work through various sites. So Vanderhoest site's right, not on the radar right now. I don't think anybody's working with them specifically. Do you have any information, John?
No. We have been working with Crown Castle on the Ocean Course Tower. As part of that process, we've put on a site visit to essentially look at the, trying to find an area for that, siding of that new tower. As part of that, the ask of the town was to look at this comprehensively. And so Crown Castle is committed at least to looking at the next tower. We haven't decided, officially determined which tower that would be, but they have already identified a day in June that we would do a second site visit for another drop and swap to understand those site conditions.
And I think there was a question about where the sites will be. I can't envision that they would go to where there are other locations than the ones that exist right now. It's the ability of getting a lease, which they've got a relationship with the resort to work through that. It's a matter of infrastructure. There's fiber run to those towers. As soon as you get to the tower, you're hitting fiber. So running tower to those locations versus an alternate location is a cost expense. They've already got, for the most part, for most of the carriers, the headends, which are the trailers that are there. There's a lot of expense putting it somewhere else, so. And those sites were picked, I wasn't part of it, but I know how sites are picked, and they were picked envisioning the future. They're not looking to add more sites, and they're, they're not looking to change sites. Those sites were well thought out, I'm sure.
Do you think they'll reduce sites? Is there any chance?
I don't know. We, so we spitballed with them a little bit, how many sites would you really need? Somehow, the number three got out there and grew legs. I don't know that that's a scientific answer. That was just a spitball answer, as we were challenging them on what they might do.
Yeah, I remember someone said, if you were starting now, and, you know, nobody knew the answer to that. I think this needs a little more work. There were some wording things that people had questions on. We just got this. We need to do something. I think there's a recognition of that. I think before we, my thought, but, you know, open to what you guys think, I would suggest we do a little more work on this before we actually pass it and send it to Town Council. I don't know that it's quite ready for primetime, that maybe we either do a little workshop or we have a subcommittee, and maybe a subcommittee is the way to go, to address some of the things that came out today, to see how we might reword it. What do you guys think?
I still don't understand, is, what would be the problem of ultimately approving this for a single site that they get, that they chose? See what, see what happens?
Approve it, say, for Ocean Course specifically.
If that's the number one place where it needed.
To respond to that question, this would be similar to a new construction house. The town can't dictate where a new tower will be located, so that's driven by the applicant. The applicant would be, have to come forth and identify the locations of where a new tower would be located.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If the applicant chooses and says, that's the one we think we should do.
Well, they've already committed to the Ocean Course Tower in doing that. So as shared before, this process is somewhat kind of running parallel to that process of they begun the Ocean Course Tower already.
And they've committed to an island-wide solution. The whole island has a problem. And in parallel, we're working fiber to the home, so that you can have alternatives for fiber for your internet access and other, other things. Right now, there are a few communities on Kiowa that have it, more than, more than the newer developments. Ocean Park is one of them. I think you run the risk of, again, there's a section of Kiowa that gets modern services, and everybody else doesn't. And I think we need to look at a whole island solution, just like we're asking the carriers to.
You know what the timing is for their Ocean Course work?
What they say, John, it would be early next year, right?
Oh, gee.
So they would, they're working out on a temporary...
Sorry.
They're working through the engineering correct, right now, and they identified an exact location because of, there's operations, they need to work, cooperate with the resort, their maintenance yard and that. But they're also now contracting with a Cow, a temporary solution for that, and so they're moving forward through the engineering right now. As far as pulling the trigger on when we will see an application, I don't know the answer to that, but I would imagine before the end of this year that that would be something that, that we would see.
Yeah, they're looking to start construction earlier next year.
John, don't go anywhere yet. So if Planning Commission doesn't take action on this or wants additional time, this is similar to what we saw with the Pervias ordinance? Like, ultimately, it's deemed recommended if they don't take any action within 30 days and it goes to council?
No. The Planning Commission has the ability to defer this, and if they want to take no time, they can. There isn't a, an action...
You haven't recommended.
...that has already been in place, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. So it's different.
But if I can add to that, having been on both sides of this now, actually, maybe all to others, we've got many years of nothing happening at Kiowa, because Kiowa's hard to work with. We now have them at the table. They're working their investment process and going through that. If we flinch and take too long, they're going to say, there you go, and they're going to move their money elsewhere, and we're going to be back at square one or worse, because they're going to feel burned from, from this. So we do need to understand the human nature and the business nature of this, that they're ready to do something, and we should, my recommendation is, support that. If we complicate their process, the money's going to go somewhere else in their company, and the effort's going to go somewhere else.
You know, I appreciate, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wouldn't, if they apply, you could make it a special use or special condition of the application to go to a higher height on a, on a singular basis?
So I'll pull back, because I think this is a good discussion point here. First, to address their, the provision of going higher through special exception, that's built into the framework today, so ultimately, you guys can make a decision to allow a different mechanism to go to an additional height. We did begin to discuss a sort of a priority mapping of which towers would be ideally at the 150 feet, and through a number of the conversations with the providers, that level of engineering, we can't answer. We're still at the mercy of the, of the tower companies who are responsive to the providers of where those towers would be located. So even if we, if we identified which were more relaxed zones, we can't be guaranteed that a tower would go there.
To address Lance's point, we do not want to be obstructionist. We, you know, we all have as a goal to improve service on the island. That's a given. We did just get this. I think there are some wording things, some things that we would like to fix or at least have a little more discussion. And I think delaying till the July meeting, moving this to Town Council is a few weeks. It's not a significant delay, and I hope we wouldn't let anyone think we don't want to do this, because we do. But we want to get it right. You know, we don't want it to go to Town Council and have them bounce it back to us. We want to get it right, and right now, we're not convinced it is right. I'm not. But I will defer if, if, you know, should we create, should we create a subcommittee rather than us all do a workshop?
Sure. But I do think we've got to be quick.
I agree. And, you know, me, I am.
Well, I'm not.
So who would like, we can have three people work on it? Who is interested in working on it? Rob, you want to work on this? I know, Sandy, you're kind of overwhelmed right now with the...
Yeah, John, it sounded like you had some good points.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be very happy.
All right, so Rob, John, and me will be the subcommittee on this. Keep me in the loop, because I've been doing it, but we can't have four of us meet, because that's a meeting. But, so if you guys can talk among yourselves in very short order, get together, and maybe get together with Lance and whomever else you think is appropriate to give good input. We're open to, you know, I don't know if Roger wants to be involved, but you have some more comments, it sounds like, here.
I just want to thank you for your considerations.
We're going to make it work.
Thank you.
The stress of the House Speaker said, I need some answers.
Yeah, no, and we will, that's why we're going to get right on.
Should we set the goal for a vote in the next Planning Commission?
Yeah, we would like to have some of this revised based on further input. You know, I wouldn't want to, I noticed in there, there was, the balloon test became discretionary. I don't think that should be discretionary. You know, in the meantime, all of you talk to your neighbors and friends. You know, I know that's anecdotal. I don't think we have time to do an actual survey, but I would, I do this all the time whenever I'm anywhere, is talk to people about this, to get as much input from others so we're not just looking at our own view. You know, we may find people like Sandy saying, hey, I look at Testicle Court, I'd rather have that than... Seriously, but we want, we want to, we don't, we don't want to delay it, but we don't want to rush it either.
You could leave yourself open to the possibility of, you know, if you can kind of fast-cycle this in the next two weeks, so that, you know, we could have a special call or whatever, so that you could hit the next Town Council meeting. Maybe, I don't know if that's a realistic timeframe? Because we come after the next Town Council meeting, right?
Yeah, I don't disagree with what Sandy's saying. I do not. I think that's actually the idea.
Let's talk about that offline.
All right.
We don't need to take everyone's time in that.
On the timeline piece, too, the point I was making is, so under state law, 629 760, it says, when it's talking about zoning ordinances, it says, "The Planning Commission shall have time prescribing the ordinance, which may not be more than 30 days within which to submit its report and recommendation of the change to the governing authority, which here is Town Council. If the Planning Commission fails to submit a report within the prescribed time, it is deemed to have approved the change or departure." So council could defer to y'all and give you additional time, but Town Council also could take this up at their next meeting if you fail to act. So I, it's, if y'all do, if you want to...
And are you comfortable giving us till next, to get this done?
Well, he can't bind, he's one vote on council.
One vote, but his vote, his opinion, I'm asking his opinion. I realize he's not, and I'll talk to the mayor, but I realize you're not...
I, my opinion, my sense of this, is we need to keep the momentum. So if there's a way to keep the momentum, we should do our best to do that.
Yeah, but are you comfortable letting us have a subcommittee to take a look at?
I, I think that's a good action. I agree with that. Have the subcommittee get together, the three people you picked. I, I would just say we need to keep the pace.
We're willing to do that. You know, we just got this.
Right.
So I don't know when your 30, I mean.
The clock should start today, right? The 30-day clock?
That's correct. Yeah, it's been, it's been reported, so you have technically have 30 days.
So it's been reported, I mean, this was just a recommendation from a public works committee. Why does that put time pressure on us?
Because state law says you have 30 days to make your recommendation to Town Council.
Regardless of.
The whole, the whole idea and like policy decision behind this is if there was something that, for whatever reason, Planning Commission didn't like, and, but they didn't want to make a recommendation of it, the Planning Commission should not be able to hold up Town Council's legislative process by just delaying. So this puts a 30-day time limit for y'all to make whatever recommendation you're going to make under state law.
Okay. When is, when is the next Town Council meeting?
July 1st.
July 1st.
Okay, so we're, so we're within 30 days.
But we can, yeah, so we, we're, we're good because July 4th would put us at 30 days. So we can't act at our July 2nd meeting.
Right.
If you want to maintain more pace, you could just, you know, kind of like have a two-week cycle on the.
We could beat it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's, we'll work on the timeline offline, but our next meeting.
We're not going to break the 30 days.
Our, our July 2nd meeting is within 30 days, so.
Just ask that, the special subwork committee that's established, if we can just put like specific, ask directives or, or questions or things that we can be in tune with, to respond to because, because of the time pressures.
I will send, I, I think all of us should, we don't need to take everyone's time on this. I think all of us should read the regulation and send our questions to the subcommittee of things we would like answered, clarified, changed, whatever. So everybody send that.
Which, can, you said a subcommittee would.
Jean, John, and Rob.
So just be aware, you'll be subject to FOIA under that until the extent you'll do meet. You'll need to have an agenda, et cetera.
I'm sorry, say.
That's three people.
That's three people. We can, it's not a quorum.
It doesn't matter. It's a quorum of that committee. So if two of the people on that committee meet, committees are also subject to FOIA.
Oh, to FOIA, but not to, because we had, we've had a lot of subcommittees over the years of three people.
You still have to comply with FOIA. You can't have a meeting without noticing it and having an agenda. It's just like.
We didn't know.
It's a quality towing case. There's a case directly on point there. And so you got to be careful with committees. That's why I'm raising this point.
We, we've gotten reminders on things we're doing too.
Okay. I'm going to ask you questions about that after. All right, so everybody comfortable? So just keep track of your emails in case anybody wants to know anything you said. That's fine. All right, so we have, we have a motion in front of us on this. I think, Matt, keep us honest on this. Since the, we have had a motion seconded to approve, so do we?
Motion to defer.
So whoever made the motion can withdraw the motion if you're not going to take any action.
I forget who it was. Whoever made the.
It was Jean made the motion and Sandy said.
Will you withdraw?
Motion to withdraw approval of, let's see, I don't know.
We got it.
Okay.
All right, now there's no motion on the table, so y'all can move on.
Okay, great. All right, so we will, we'll get this done, guys.
Yes.
Okay, now our other guests have been waiting for. Under new business number 3 AZ 025 000007, amendments of ordinance 23, 2023-23. This is to remove the amendment restated development agreement as an appendix to the zoning code to refine intent and setback standards, which is something we thought we had done a couple of years ago. But anyway, go ahead, John.
Yes, so this is a text amendment to an existing ordinance 2023-23. Ordinance 20, 2023-23, this is the ordinance that Town Council approved, which essentially removed the previously executed 2013 amended and restated development agreement as an appendix from our current zoning code. The purpose of the intent of what's before you today is to refine the intent regarding how these setbacks are applied. And so within this, the only modifications to that exhibit are essentially the whereas clauses that are part of the actual ordinance itself. And Exhibit B, the first page of that. So I wanted to, uh, read what's on Exhibit B because that's essentially where the changes impact most. And so the purpose was to look at all of the properties that were developed and the properties that were undeveloped during a time period of the expiration of the 2013 development agreement. Those properties which were undeveloped at that time, part of the undeveloped lands, at the expiration of ARDA would have been subject now to our base zoning districts, a part of our zoning code. This language that's being prepared before you today just clarifies that, that any lands that are part, that were subject to the development agreement at that time of expiration of ARDA would essentially be responsive to the zoning designations respective to the zoning district in our current zoning code. So it's really just an intent clarity purpose of this ordinance. It doesn't change any of the zoning district standards or any of the attached materials regarding the original 2023-23 ordinance.
We didn't have a motion on this. We're supposed, let somebody move it, please.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No, just say you moved item 3.
So move.
Second.
Okay. So a discussion on this. Any questions on what John's talking about? None of you were here when we did this last time. Yeah, we, I guess we didn't quite do it well enough, but we did do. Any questions on what John's talking about? I'm comfortable with it and I was here last time. Good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, it passes. All right, now, on to the new business item B, comprehensive map amendments. The ACP 25-01, future land use map amendment. Daniel's floor, yours.
So I'll, I'll kind of give a, I'll treat ACP 25-000001 and REZ 25-000001 together in one. The first part, ACP 25-000001, applicant is requesting to amend the Tanaquilla Island's comprehensive plan, future land use map, change the future land use designation for the subject properties located within or near the Ocean Park neighborhood. Similarly, case REZ 25-000001, as the applicant is requesting to amend the Tanaquilla Island zoning map to change the zoning classification for the subject properties located within or near the Ocean Park neighborhood. Now, I'm going to read out these numbers just for the record. I'm going to do it once. We can change them later, but I'll just kind of go through it now. TMS numbers 265-16-00-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27, 30, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61 through 70, 71 through 80, 81 through 90, 91 through 100.
Except for 86 and 87.
Except for 86 and 87. Thank you. 100 through 110, 111 through 115, 122, 123, 124, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 136 through 140, 141 through 150, 151 through 158, 161, 163, 166, 167, 169, 170 through 179, 181, 182, 183, 185, 189, 190 through 200, 201 through 210, 211 through 220, 220 through 230, 231, 232, 233, 234, 235, 236, 237, 238, 239, 241, 242, 243, 244, 245, 246, 247, 248, 249, 250, and 251. All those TMS numbers from medium density residential to low density residential. TMS numbers 207-00-00-030, from medium density residential to civic and institutional. TMS numbers 207 0000015. TMS number 265 16 00013, 028 073 086, 0, excuse me, 148 165 212 227 229 and 240, from medium density residential to active recreation and open space. TMS numbers 265 16 00 185 and 207 0000020, from low density residential to active recreation and open space. And TMS numbers 265 16 00 186, from medium density residential to active recreation, resident, active recreation residential and open space. Here are just a list of the future land use categories in discussion today. We can flip back and forth between this one and the map. If you'd like me to read them out, I can. But we can, we can go forward to the map. And again, this is for the comprehensive plan, future land use map amendments. We'll address this one and then we'll go to the rezoning after this discussion. So on the left-hand side of your screen, this is the current future land use map. And on the right side is the proposed future land use map based on the TMS numbers and the conversation that was provided by staff. Here's just a larger version of that proposed future land use map. And here's a, a visual map with a couple of point of interest icons that, that can go into further, that we can go into further discussion with. And again, the applicant is requesting to re, to change the future land use map for all platted single-family lots in order to more accurately represent existing and anticipated home construction of the current land use pattern. Properties which are not single-family residential homes are being recommended to be, to be amended, the future land use map to be amended to the most compatible use and/or retain their future land use. We can open it up to discussion. Are there any questions?
Mark, do you want to make some comments before we start discussing?
What I would suggest, if you're comfortable with it, as you proceed through discussing specifics, I, I could offer some observations or comments rather than necessarily going through the list.
Okay.
Whatever's, whatever is comfortable for the Planning Commission.
Okay, first, how about, we need a motion to.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so now discussion on this. I've talked with John a lot about it. I'm comfortable with all these changes. Does anybody have any comments on the changes? Questions, concerns? I think we're, we're okay to approve. So if you have some comments, Mark, go for it.
I'll be on the close.
All right. This may be a little bit awkward, but I'm going to wear multiple hats and I'll call out.
You recommend the homeowners, the resort, and the partners.
So let me first start with the origin of the initial request that you responded to by initiating this. It was a request from the Ocean Park property owners of the residential lots, the platted residential lots, like the individual home sites that were, on their property, it presently exists as an R2 category. When the development agreement with Kiowa Partners expired in December of '23, there was actually an unintentional happening that adversely affect, affected certain property owners out there that we, that none of us were aware of, to be honest with you. And it was approximately 65 or 70 home sites, if I'm not mistaken. And what it was, was the R2 category standards in the development agreement were, were slightly different in one specific category, which is the side yard dimension of lot sizes that were less than 12,000 square feet. And it was a difference of either 10 or 15 feet compared to the R2 zoning classification that the town has right now. And that, that was the new standard then. Everyone, everyone heard, and I'm raising my hand, I didn't notice it, that R2 is R2. Well, what started to happen were some homeowners that were in the design process submitted their plans. And this was discovered that the actual setback on their property changed from 10-foot side yard to 15-foot. All the homes that were built prior to that honored the 15-foot. So that was a signal that something was amiss. And we reached out on behalf, we being, the homeowners association reached out on behalf of them to discuss this sort of unintended consequence with the planning staff, in which we shared with them, we, we think there's something amiss here. There were two paths for correcting that. One would have been a text amendment to the existing town R2 zoning classification to bring it in line with other equivalent, like-kind lot sizes in the R1 category or the R3. So this is where I'm probably going to add too much complexity. But, but I'm raising my hand thinking, it was ju, it was a text error.
Yeah, and Mark, just to, to be clear on this, we had talked about this back in the fall. None of us, you're right, were aware of the setback issues.
Yeah, exactly.
But we were going to do this anyway. If you remember, you and I talked with Luke Farrell back when we had the public comment on the future land use map. And we were going to go to, well preceding this request from the homeowners, we agree, we're going to go from R2 to R1. It was never a problem for, to do it.
I'm not presenting it as a, a, a negative response. I was just trying to give a little color to the history. So when we submitted the letter of, we requested consideration of a map amendment. A map, you know, to, to change it to R1 category rather than the text amendment approach. So I am raising my hand on behalf of the Ocean Park property owner, the resident property owners. Of we support the, the recommendation of changing the zoning category for the platted individual home sites, the majority of which are built on, but there are others that haven't been built on yet. So that's the first thing I want to recommend or, or offer support for. All right, I'm switching my hat. There are other recommendations that are being considered that directly affect Kiowa Island Golf Resort and, and Kiowa Partners. Let me first address Kiowa Island Golf Resort. Maybe we could, John, we could show which ones are directly affected, but the, the, I'm not going to go through all the citations, but by, by way of example, the one that ends. Sorry, I was getting a pointer. Let's do that one, that teardrop first. The, the teardrop, which is.
Number 3.
Three, right? A lot of you might be familiar, if you were here for any of the PGA tournaments, that's, this is like the media location, essentially tournament setup for the media location. But more importantly, it's part of the existing development agreement of KIGR, in which it's assigned an R2 category. And there, there are certain uses that are aligned with that. And the standards of the town's R2 prevail with the Kiowa Island Golf Resort. Their request is not to change that to the category of R1. The basis for that is to continue the agreement, in the development agreement, as is. They don't have any specific plans right now, but what they do is every, every, on a certain timeframe, they revisit all the standards of all their holdings, and their recommendation is not to change that from an R2 to R1 category. In a similar fashion, there's a piece of property, which I think is number five, adjacent, adjacent to the existing maintenance. Roger.
Your recommendation to make is not to take the teardrop from R2 to R1, is to take the teardrop, as I understand, to recreation and park, which has not got the billable opportunity that R2 does, correct?
Right, I was going to add.
Unless I was misreading that.
Yeah, I was going to, I apologize, I was going to add to that.
I thought the teardrop was going R1, from R2 to R1.
What I read when I came here was going R1.
Can you put the map back up? Because we don't have it. The teardrop is number three, that's going to R1.
So this is, this is the future, future land use.
Future land use.
So low-density residential.
Yeah.
We'll go from R2 to R1, not active rec.
Yeah, I'm going to get to the next one, which I think is the one that you're referencing. Roger. So teardrop number three, we're requesting it be retained the same as it exists now. Now, if we go to five, excuse me, six, six, I apologize, six. The existing maintenance area is adjacent to this parcel, the existing golf maintenance is actually part of the tract of the ocean course. But the remnant, number six, in the development agreement, is medium-density residential. So on the comp plan, we're, we're requesting it remain the same as is and not change the zoning for a map amendment to, which I believe is park and recreation, right? Right, that's the recommendation. So it not only, I mean, it's a complete downzoning from no residential, from existing residential, medium de- residential to no residential. And then the, the final one is number one, I should have led with this one, is Willet Island. Willet Island is within a new zoning classification that was approved by town council, I want to say, four years ago or so, in the creation of the PR-O-C, a unique zoning classification that is attributed to the ocean course grounds, the entirety of the, in terms of the clubhouse and the cottages that you know are out there, and future cottage sites. If it's retained in this category that you're proposing, that's okay, as long as there's certain clarification that residential, under the development agreement and, and the zoning classification, the PR-O-C allows for residential under specific conditions, as long as that's retained. We don't want it to get lost that, that this is a developable area under the existing zoning classification. Is that...
So you want, so number one should be PROC?
Yeah, it, it is presently PROC. It's shown on our, on our existing zoning map as a special green category, I think, right, John?
Yeah, it looks like it's the same green as ocean. The colors are a little, I think, I think it's, isn't...
It's hard to see the differential on your, on your monitor.
Yeah, it is. It is, but no, I agree with you, that should remain PROC.
Yeah. We're, we're, all we're doing is reinforcing, retain the existing attributes of the PR-O-C, that it's not somehow considered an undeveloped piece of property within that.
And your other concern is that the two that were low-density, on the left, that are the beige, low-density residential, on the right, they're active rec, open space, you want to keep them low-density residential?
So that is exactly what...
Is that what you're saying?
So I wanted to just reiterate what Daniel just shared. Right now, we're, we're mixing the zoning and the future land use.
Yeah, I apologize. I drifted, yeah.
No, no, it's okay, we're just, just being cognizant of that. The future land use designation would be active recreation and residential and open space for that, that parcel. That's the same, the same green color.
Right.
This is that new future land use category and new...
Oh, good.
PRC OC.
Okay, good, yeah, okay, all right. So let me go through the three KRG properties again, because I probably drifted too much. The teardrop piece, we're, we're requesting retention of the existing medium density on the comp plan. I'll just stop on the comp plan stuff right now, okay? We are requesting, the next parcel is the one adjacent to the existing maintenance area. The proposal is to eliminate all residential capabilities there to the park and recreation, right? Is it?
Active recreation.
Active recreation, sorry. We are again requesting retention of the existing R2 category that's presently within the development agreement. And then the final act is just reinforcing with the possibility of clarification language that residential is still permitted on Willet Island as a part of the PR-O-C. That's the existing zoning. I think we'd all agree that that's permitted, but in the comp plan, if there could be a call-out to reference that as a unique set of circumstances.
Is ocean course maintenance, is not one you're, yeah, it's, go ahead.
Well, those two parcels, the one, maintenance and the one adjacent to it, right now are low-density residential. They're not, they're not R2.
I apologize, I can't hear.
He's saying the current ones are the beige, they're R1.
R2 designation requires the development.
But the current future land use map has it as R1.
R1.
For those two parcels that... It says current future land use map and proposed future land use map.
Yeah, I, I'm going to say this again, we're crossing the zoning designation and the future land use designation. So if it's helpful, we should maybe address one and then come back to the zoning. I know it's, it's easier because there's reflective of the actual pragmatic use of the property based on the zoning designations, but, or we can just take one parcel at a time, do the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the zoning, and then move to the next parcel, just to help the conversation.
Let's do that.
Yeah, so let's, can we start?
Let's take one parcel at a time.
Yes.
We'll let, hear your things, and then we'll let you know.
What I'll, what I'll do is, to, to help this, I'll introduce the parcel, allow Mark to share what they believe should be the appropriate future land use and the appropriate zoning designation, then we'll move to the next parcel. So beginning with the future land use for, this is number three, we'll, we'll start with number one, Willet Island. So Willet Island, that future land use proposal is currently now in the active recreation residential and open space.
As, as long as that clarifies the, the ability for the resort to retain the residential use allowed in the PR-O-C, we recommend support for that.
And to affirm that would allow that, that, that to allow residential to occur in that parcel.
Yeah, and I'm okay, should we vote on each one individually? Would that make it clear?
That would help the record if, if...
Okay, so let's, let's address parcel one.
At least we would have you guys' opinion on that as we go through.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, are we approving the future land use and the...
What I would recommend then, Chair, is if we would do, to move forward, the planning commission approves staff's recommendation with the following changes. And so then you would identify parcel by parcel what those changes are. So parcel Willet Island, then you could announce what, what that recommendation for Willet Island is.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm confused, because I thought you were asking for clarification, so there's no change.
Right, but we want to approve the future land use map and the zoning. Could you put up the zoning thing, too, so people can be clear?
Well, I don't have a map with both the zoning and the future land use at the same time, but we can show you the zoning right here.
Okay, so, yeah, could, so we'll look at, so Willet Island is the resort, it's under, on this, it shows resort overlay, so we're talking about this should be PR-O-C, which is the...
Correct.
Okay, so basically, there's no change to Willet Island.
That's correct, I'm just reinforcing something.
Okay. Are we all good with no change to Willet Island? I have no problem with that.
Okay, so...
Okay, so do we have a motion?
So in that, if there's no change, then you don't have to address that.
Okay, let's move on to the next thing, because that's where...
What he's saying is if you're okay with what staff's recommending, just leave it alone, and you can make a motion to approve all the staff recommendations. If you have a problem with it, that's where you'll want to make a motion to differ from staff's recommendation.
Okay, okay.
It's okay.
Clear.
You have a motion on the table for the comp plan. About the discussion, you have a motion about discussion for the land use.
Thank you. So we should maybe, if you're going to do both the zoning and at the same time, just let's retract the original motion and then propose a motion to, to staff's recommendation on both the future land use and the zoning.
So who would...
That was Jean Denver, okay, did Jean withdraw?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so now a new motion to look at both the...
New motion to consider future land use as well as future zoning changes.
Oh, second.
All, okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, so now let's, we're all in agreement on number one, Willet Island, the next parcel we're going to talk about.
This would be the... Just, sorry, just to clarify, there's no, we don't recommend, staff does not recommend any zoning changes to Willet Island. Right now, it's currently parks and rec, which is, which differs from the PR slash ocean course, which contains the cottages. So just to clarify, we want to keep the same zoning as parks and rec.
It looks like it's resort overlay on this map.
It's park, rec, ocean course.
It is a resort overlay, which is the red dash lines, but from what Mark's comments...
They're allowed to put cottages there, that's what you're saying, you want to be able to do, and we're not objecting to that.
Right, so just clarify that that will allow in the zoning would be the PROC category as, as being recommended, that, so that is a change from what staff, that's what Daniel's pointing at, that is...
So that is a change.
So that is a change, yes.
Okay, so we are going to recommend that Willet Island be...
We'll accept those.
Are people in agreement with that, that it can be PROC, and if they want to put cottages there, they can?
Right.
Do we need, so should we do a separate vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To adjust staff's...
Can I have a motion on Willet Island, please?
Motion on Willet Island to...
Your mic, dear.
Oh, shoot. I make a motion on Willet Island, gonna need a little coaching here.
PROC.
PROC.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, any discussion, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, Willet Island is PROC. Okay, the next...
I'm sorry, this little, we'll, we'll get through it.
I feel like my height, I'm the point guard. These are the forwards.
The next two parcels, I'm going to go just in line, just to keep us here, which are two in parcel two, and actually parcel four are similar in nature. These are open space parcels along Pete Dye. And so the low, the future land use recommendation is that they become active recreation and open space.
Mark, do you have any comments on that? Are you okay with that?
I would support that, too. I don't think there are any setback issues dealing with the, that's the zoning thing, let's forget. No, we support that.
Okay, so because there's no changes, we don't need a motion. Okay, moving on.
For the zoning designation for those parcels, those parcels are being recommended to go to parks and recreation.
And we're all in agreement on that?
I am with, with one question. Is there anything related to setback standards of zoning classifications that vary from side to side like that, that would impact the residential?
No, so the setback would remain in place for the existing residential units adjacent to.
So I support it.
Okay, so no changes on numbers four and, what was it?
Two and four.
Two and four, excuse me. Put the map back up. Okay, so two and four, no changes, so we don't need a motion. Let's move on.
Parcel three, which is the teardrop parcel, recommendation for future land use is low-density
As I said before, we think it should remain as a medium-density residential as outlined in the existing development agreement between the town and KIGR.
And I think this is where we might have some disagreement with you. If there is a new development agreement, we're not going to address that here today, but that whole area is low-density residential, and from the residents I talked to out there, they want to keep it low-density residential. So personally, I support the changes. Other opinions, thoughts, commissioners on parcel three?
I support it being low-density.
Low-density.
Yeah, I agree.
So since this is a change, we need a motion, correct?
This is not a change.
Not a change. Oh, because we're...
Sorry, your recommendation.
Sorry, Mark.
Regarding the zoning for...
You should say this to Roger.
Sorry, Roger. But, you know, and given, you know, it's, the PGA is going to become...
I apologize, I don't know what for.
We're not, we're not keeping it medium-density, we're...
So I know I should notice, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. Mark, in terms of low-density, value of low-density over the medium-density, what's the change?
The only, the only change is an allowance for residential type. The pa- let me answer it this way. If you were to continue the pattern of residential development that presently exists in Ocean Park right now, the home site sizes, the variations in those, the single-family detached, there is no fundamental change in that.
After the, after the proposed change to the, from the R2 to the R1, which is being done here, would this be the same zone?
This is land, no, this is just land use right now, we're not talking zoning yet.
All right.
We're jumping to zoning.
Okay, we jumped to zoning. I would ask, John, do you agree with the fundamental differences between the R1 and the R2 zoning classification?
So regarding the zoning classification, R1 and R2, Ocean Park has been developed, in theory, for single-family residential. There is a mixture of lot sizes, that's the pretty much difference. There are some lots under the 12,000-square-foot setting. You still would be able to do that under the R1 designation because of the variation, variation in lot sizes pursuant to our R1 development. So they're consistent, if, if residential is the idea.
Right.
So for the proposed, we don't need to have a motion because we're agreeing with the proposed, is that correct?
Yeah.
Question for John, though, with R2, R1, is there a difference with respect to rental or other issues outside of it?
No.
So if people are in agreement with the proposed, we don't need a motion?
Right.
It goes to R1.
No, because that's how it's working.
Any, okay, move on, next parcel.
So the next parcel would be number five. Number five is, this parcel here, adjacent just north of the, the actual, I don't know what shape this is, I'm going to do a... shape this is, I'm going to do a navy ship here, shaped parcel here, but this is the maintenance, a portion of the maintenance yard, the entrance to the maintenance yard is actually just about here. The footprint of that sits about here, but it's adjacent essentially to the larger footprint of the golf course. And so the recommendation is to go to active recreation and open space.
Are we looking at five and six together?
We can do those together if...
I, I'm trying to think of what they look like.
I'll bring up the aerial, I'll bring up the GIS aerial just to give us a better view of which parcel's which. Don't, don't look yet, you might get a headache. Okay.
So here's number five.
It actually bleeds into the front nine of the course proper. I'm using that in terms of golf terminology, front nine, not the residential.
So that's the number six, 185, and this is number five.
We're, we're talking about number five right now?
Yes.
And...
So number five is the one below 185, which doesn't have a number on it. Oh, it's part of, part of the golf course, it looks like, okay.
I meant five on the list.
Five on the list.
Yeah, so five on the list is the...
The lower one.
The lower one and 185 is number six. All right.
So, so what this does is reinforce that the maintenance area, and quite frankly, that's a wetland between the area, is consistent with the golf course, and that is consistent with all golf courses on Kiowa. Maintenance areas are part of the golf course, and they have the same land use category.
Which is active rec and open space.
Yeah, so number six is just that parcel to the north, which the recommendation is active recreation and open space. Sorry, Mark, I'm trying to mean this larger. Number six, yeah.
This is a substantive change from the existing comp plan, the existing comp plan, which recognizes that's a residential area. And unlike what we talked about, the other teardrop area, or, excuse me, unlike what we talked about, Willard Island, is, this is a substantive change of land use. It eliminates all residential capabilities there, and we would strongly recommend retention of the existing residential category.
It's R1 right now?
I'm sorry?
It's R1 right now?
It's R2 right now. If we're consistent with the teardrop, it would be R1.
Yeah, I know.
It would retain, it would retain residential use. To eliminate it completely is down, substantive downzoning.
Yeah, John, you and I talked about this. We had concerns that, that that might be a bridge too far on six, that it should stay R1.
Yeah, whatever, the pleasure of the commission, if you, if the recommendation is to retain the low-density residential, that would be a change in the respective R...
Yeah, we wouldn't have it R2, for sure.
So let's just, you can make that designation now for the future land use, if to make that low-density.
Daniel, listen, because we, yeah, you were involved in that conversation.
So a partial reason for staff's recommendation for this is that cell tower is located on number six, the Ocean Course maintenance.
And I doubt anyone would want to live next to it, so whether, whatever we zone, it doesn't matter, because I, to John's earlier point, I doubt anyone's going to want to build a house right next to a cell tower.
Cell towers are not allowed on residential zonings. So if we do not change the zoning, a cell tower is not allowed.
Is the cell tower there now?
Yes.
It's currently not.
Right.
Roger, if you're comfortable with the cell tower there, do you want to put any residential on?
Yeah, Mark, it's sort of the downzoning aspect of it, is that you have to take the parcel that cell tower's on and separate it, and do a smaller parcel that would be compliant with whatever zoning you put there to have a cell tower. Just don't want to lose the rest of that parcel six and have it downzoned.
I, I think he has a good point.
Would you say the residential may not be an ideal site, but this is a matter of philosophy right now, I don't want to do it now, downzone it.
I, I can appreciate his point on that, and I think it's a good recommendation. If we don't want to change the zoning and all of a sudden not be able to do what we were doing earlier today with the cell tower, so we...
Carve out.
Carve out the cell tower part and make that whatever is the appropriate zoning and future land use for the cell tower, and we let them keep R1, not R2 on the residential.
Whatever it is on the other golf course is where the cell towers are. That's what the zoning, like park and recreation, like that.
Correct.
So can we do a carve out on that for...
Yeah, I mean, so just for the record, we, we can't subdivide the property. I just want to make that clear, that we can't subdivide the property, but yes.
So do you, does the resort have to come to us with a subdivision request?
Correct.
All right, so why don't you guys do that?
But I would, I would say what you, what can occur is that we can take the recommendation and still apply it, but just know that that, the subdivision of that parcel would come...
After.
After, and, and, and I understand they're wanting to maintain the residential, we're not going to let it be R2, we will maintain it as, we will make it R1?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Mark. That parcel, the largest parcel there for the clubhouse would be, it doesn't have a number on it, but that currently has the same zoning as the clubhouse in, in the, where we can do cottages and things like that. That's not changing?
No.
Yeah.
That's all.
Moving on?
So do we need a motion on...
So, yeah, we need a motion there, then.
On six?
On number six, correct.
So how should we, Mac or somebody, how, what's the best wording for this?
Just make a motion to, to use a future land use density, I'm sorry, future land use map to low, low density, and then for the, for the zoning, R2.
R1.
R1.
And then you'll come to us for a subdivision application, and we'll separate that out. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm so moved by what Joe just said.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, it passes.
We're halfway through, you guys are getting good now.
Trying to keep it moving.
The next one is number seven, which is the utility tract, which is owned by Q Island Utility. Is this the one, this is a change to this purple designation, which is civic and institutional, for the future land use.
That's what it is, so I think.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments on that?
I, I don't represent the utility company, but it makes total sense. Everywhere on Kiowa where the utility is present, it has that.
Yeah, no, we're fine with that.
For the zoning for that parcel, it is going to the community support designation, so, just for the record.
I think we're all good with that, unless anybody, okay, next.
Parcel number eight, which is the Marsh House, this is future land use designation being recommended to active recreation and open space, and the zoning recommendation is to go to the Parks and Recreation zoning district.
You got your partner hat on now, are you okay with this?
Now I have partner's hat on. So on both circumstances, both the comp land use map and the zoning map, we support the rezoning. All club facilities on Kiowa are within that zoning classification, so it's consistent with how the town has handled that use.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, so we accept the staff recommendation on that, next.
Parcel's nine.
Marsh.
Yeah, out here, Little Bear Way. This is a marsh area that is wrapped around those three parcels that are off of Little Bear Way. The designation recommendation is for that to be active recreation and open space, and the zoning designation will reflect our Parks and Recreation zoning district.
It's a marsh?
Where is that?
It's marsh.
So how can we, I, I'm curious why we're zoning a marsh?
I would say it's residual, I mean, it's marsh, there's probably, there's no high ground there, but you pull up the area for...
We're not talking about the parcels.
Yeah.
Our stretch of that.
It had, yes.
165?
So 165.
Are those residential plots on the trees?
So these are residential lots here.
And there's a bridge, if you've been out there, there's a concrete bridge that access, so that's, that's marsh. So whatever land use and zoning category, marsh, which is half of Kiowa, should be, it should be consistent with that.
It reflects the same designation that we have for many other areas on Kiowa.
Okay, it's kind of moot, because you're not going to build in the marsh, right?
It's part of our municipal boundary, so we have...
Can't, why wouldn't we zone a conservation then?
That, what I was indicating is, whatever category from the zoning standpoint, that we have all the marsh that wraps around Kiowa, it should be consistent with that.
It would, I mean, wouldn't, shouldn't our marsh be conservation? I mean, we don't want anybody ever building, you know, a pier or, you know, a...
Jog, jog here.
A campground out in the marsh, I mean...
It doesn't show it.
Why, why wouldn't the marsh be conservation area?
Is that a bigger question, then, if it's consistent?
So we, so...
Have been all marsh?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I never thought about zoning the marsh today, the truth. It's like zoning the ocean, it just never occurred to me.
It's not on this particular cutout here, but the far east end, which wraps this way, if you see my pointer, that's zone conservation. So, I mean, there's...
Those are like dune fields.
Those are, are dune fields. Areas in, let's do this, let's use our new tool, John, Daniel, if you can pull...
I guess my question is, if we don't want any building on there, which I think we don't want any building in the marsh, why wouldn't we just zone it all conservation? I, I don't understand why we'd do active rec and open space for a marsh.
That, that can be a change recommendation, staff would support that.
Other people's thoughts on this?
I don't know what you would put out there.
Does conservation have to be an actual easement?
So, this is, I wanted to, I just wanted to show you here the areas that would be similar along the west end that are essentially the marsh wrapped areas around Inlet Cove. Those are also in our PR zoning category, so it's just reflective of the same designation there. As you're all aware, that the, the fingers here to the north off of the Parkway, those were changed to conservation. So you can, it's, you can go...
I would do conservation.
But would that necessitate a change here?
We could do that.
Or a review of other similar areas, so that you're moving to consistent...
I mean, right now, it sounds like we have both, so we can go either way on the east end of the island. And I think the goal of most of us long-term is to conserve as much as possible, so, given I don't think there's anything you can build, and we don't know what technology would allow to be built in the future, let's make it conservation, is my thought. But other thoughts?
Agree.
Does conservation necessitate an easement, a conservation easement?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. You know, a lot of conservation is an easement, so it's...
Yeah, that's the one category we didn't list as, as a descriptor here, but yeah, you, you could potentially have without an easement.
So we need a motion, because that's a change. Can we...
What's this property called?
Marsh.
Marsh.
If you can go to, to number nine and...
Number nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Motion to designate property number nine as conservation.
Nine, how about 10, nine, 10, and 11?
10, 11, and 12 are separate, so...
So motion designate property number nine as marsh, I mean, as conservation space.
Conservation for both the future land use and the zoning.
The future land use is zoning.
And so.
Second.
Okay, any discuss, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, it passes. We are now conserving our marsh.
All right, so 10, 11, and 12, these are small slithers of open space that are embedded within the residential development home sites, adjacent to, within Ocean Park. Mark, you want to share any details in it, but right now, the recommendation is for those to go active recreation and open space. These parties are Highlands, so just to note.
So once again, from the property owner's standpoint, we recommend approval of that. To explain what those are, is they were organized with the conceptual master plan for Ocean Park. So if you take the roads that run perpendicular to the parallel roads to the marsh, and if you're heading out, the idea of those open space strips is, when you drive, you're not looking at a house.
Ooh.
You look, you look at natural framework. The natural framework led the construction and organization of the overall site plan, of which residential is within it. So usually you have the opposite, usually you have, open space is residual, stuff you can't use. No, it was started with the principle of what's the natural framework? So that's the explanation behind it.
Again, so why, why not conservation on this as well?
Well, it's part, it's part of the parkland, it's forested parkland. So where you see green on the rest, you know, where the open grassy areas are, those are forested areas, too. It's part of the parkland area.
But I guess, you know, these are long, narrow strips. Could it be, what's the difference, should we make it conservation? Does it matter?
I, I wouldn't recommend that, because I'm coming from the direction of, it was considered as part of parkland, it just happens to be forested in an unusual shape, but it's part of the park system. It's not like the park is the open grassy area and everything else is not.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, but I guess my question is, do you foresee it being used as parkland versus, I mean, conservation just means you can't build on it. I, I don't know.
Well, in the park, in the parkland area, there are forested areas there that aren't being, do you...
I guess my, my question is, what about conservation? Do you have a problem? Why would there be a problem making it conservation?
The only problem I have is it's incongruent with the concept. It ends up being the same, you're not, you can't develop it, but it's, I don't, I don't know how else to explain what I'm explaining.
I think as, as it was originally envisioned, it was parkland, so in Mark's mind, changing how, what we call it is inconsistent with the original plan, so he would advocate that we keep it as it is, is what I think he's saying.
But the other property out there, too, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
If it can't be built, I mean, to me, it's a conservation area, but I, if, if, in reality, it doesn't make a difference, as long as it's never going to be built on and not going to have campgrounds out there.
It was all, it was all part of the overall plan to be handled. Are there a couple other places on the island where there are those strips down to the ocean?
So I live on Dungannon Hall, and if you look at the streets, the A, B, C, D streets on that side of the marsh, you'll see similar strips.
Yeah.
The, the similar strips are there, same, same philosophy, it's just extended to down in here, so...
Not a hill to die on.
So no, no change.
So people are comfortable leaving it active rec?
Yes.
Fine, go with the flow on this.
So there's one more, which is this designation here of 13, which is the open space parkland in the center of Ocean Park. The recommendation is for this to go to our Parks and Recreation zoning district, which the future land use is already the active recreation, recreation open space.
So that's just keeping it what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So I have my Kiowa partner's hat on now. I would debate with you that these are zoned properly to that zoning classification, when we get to the zoning map, because we were never notified for zoning change from R2 category. So what I'm representing on behalf of the partners is, this is a substantive, first of all, this is a surprise today. This wasn't part of the package of last week. I'm react, I'm reacting lot...
This is included in there.
Not the, not the package last week.
No, in the list of, the list of parcels, this parcel, parcel 15 is in there.
No, but it, I'm just, well, it was, but what was, what was represented is it was going to be rezoned from R2 to R1. If you look at the listing, I don't, I don't have it with me. If you look at the listing, I don't, I don't have it with me, but if you looked at the listing, if I'm not mistaken, it was part of the massive listing of properties in, to be zoned from R2 to R1, which we would support.
To R.
That was the original advertisement.
That's what was advertised. That's what the package was that I received last week.
So this, this parcel, Daniel? 13 being. Okay.
And I'm here to represent, and I represented it in my correspondence last week. We support changing R2 to R1, but today, this comes as a surprise to me that it's being eliminated.
I guess since it is parks and open space, put on your HOA hat. Don't they want that to stay parks and open space?
I'm representing the owner of that parcel right there. I'm representing the owner of the parcel that sees for the first time today elimination of a zoning category to something that we weren't aware of.
I appreciate that.
That's all I can represent.
So is he saying we didn't properly notice something, John?
The parcel 15 was advertised as going from R2 to R1, is what Daniel was stating. So yes. Correct. So.
And I'm raising my hand. I was prepared today to support that.
Yeah, okay, but 13.
Opposed to this image showing the PR designation, so the same colors as light, tan, would be what the recommendation for the zoning would be reflective of these areas.
So the green area, if you drive out there, it's all parks. Are you saying that that park can be built on?
I am simply representing that the existing zoning is R2.
For that whole green area?
All I can represent is the existing zoning is R2, and the recommendation that I received was, and published, was R1. And I'm raising my hand saying, on behalf of the client, we support that.
I guess I'm confused too, because I just assumed that all the R1, R2 to R1 is all these plotted residential areas. My assumption, obviously incorrectly, that all the green areas are and will be and continue to be parks and open space. If that is not the case, then we need to address that, because I think if you put on your HOA hat, that's what people want out there, that, you know, you have plotted lots and everyone knows where the plots are, the undeveloped lots, the developed lots, but I think there would be universal support in Ocean Park to keep the open spaces open.
What has been advertised for the formal meeting on July 1st is a change from R2 to R1.
Yeah, and I guess, and I did not know, and John, this is something we did not know, that I assumed the R2 to R1 just applies to the platted property.
My recommendation, just because what is being recommended here in the presentation is different than what was noticed, is we just defer this and leave it alone for now. And then staff can always bring it back once it's properly noticed.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because I think the goal is, we've got all those home sites flatted, and I don't know that we want development on all the open park spaces, so come back to us.
And in support of the comment by counsel, I'm sure the client would be willing to sit down and have a conversation about this, but I hope you understand what I have to represent today.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We, we were not aware of that either. So we'll leave this one for now.
We'll hold on to that one.
We're going to leave that for now and get our ducks in a row.
So if you can just make a motion, just for the record, move to remove that parcel from staff's recommendation.
I make a motion to remove parcel 13, Ocean Park Parklands. Did I say that right?
Oh, it's there.
Not parcel 13.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. For today's purposes, what we were referring to as 13 Ocean Park Parklands from the staff's recommendations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, yes, ma'am.
So John, as I have it, parcel 1, parcel 6, parcel 9, and 13, they did not go with staff recommendations. So 1, 6, 9, and 13. So they would still need to make a motion to accept staff recommendations for the future land use regulations and zonings, or rezonings, other than 1, 6, 9, and 13. Correct. I thought the original motion captured that, but if you wanted, we can share that.
I think just to clean it up, we should probably do that.
If one of you want to.
I think I've got it. 1, 6, 9, and 13, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the ones we're not accepting the staff recommendations.
I make a motion that we do not, that we do not adopt staff recommendations for parcel 1, Willett Island, parcel 6, Ocean Course Maintenance, parcel 9, Ocean Park HOA, and parcel 13, Ocean Park Parklands.
Second.
And do we, do we have to say for each?
Yeah, so you've already made the motions on those parcels, so you're making a motion to accept the staff recommendations.
On everything else?
On everything else other than those.
I withdraw my prior motion. And would like to make a, big ups, and would like to make a new motion that we, excluding parcels today called 1, 6, 9, and 13, Willett Island, Ocean Course Maintenance, Ocean Park Homeowners Association, and Ocean Park Parklands, excluding those, we accept staff recommendations for everything else.
Yeah, for the future land use regulations and rezonings.
For future land use recommendations.
And zoning, or we're just?
And zoning, yeah.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Are there any other properties of interest that weren't in this list that you guys want to discuss?
I have a question, which I can take off on. If with this most recent discussion around Ocean Park Parklands 13, if part of it is R1, well, that will be the ultimate decision, and we want to keep parkland or part of it, does it have to get subdivided? Or how would that actually work?
Yeah, so we would attach a specific TMS number for each of these, just like we mentioned earlier with the resort maintenance.
With the cell tower.
With the cell tower. Yes.
So in fact, we did not rezone all of Ocean Park R1 today. We need to do that to address the setback issues for these property owners. We need to get that done.
No, what, your motions have captured the residential home sites within, within Ocean Park. With that, those are all, that, we're in the clear, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that's it. Yeah.
Okay.
So if I could, if I could just say something in conclusion. First of all, thank you again for being patient with the Ocean Park property owners principally on their initial request. And the second thing is, I think the three of us are going to be a dance act in North Charleston in terms of movement around it.
All right, correspondence and staff comments, John.
Let me find my notes here. I will start with the updates from our town council meeting on yesterday afternoon. Town council considered final reading of the pervious paving requirements. As you all recall, that ordinance had hung out for a very long time, danced around here and there, and finally made its way back to town council after a 30-day period window. No action was taken by town council. It was deferred back to the planning commission. And so staff is now preparing for a special workshop that we'll have regarding pervious paving in the world and white, members of private sector and community to partake one more time in that particular ordinance. There were a few takeaways regarding the time period of effect, of effectiveness, and some other, some other notes, and so we'll bring that back. And hopefully, next month, we'll schedule, right now, I think we have a tentative date for July, I forget now, Petriya, July 19th is, right now, we looked at, but we'll bring that back as a scheduled workshop.
Question on that, John. So is that being sent, oh, sorry. You're on the mic. Is that being sent back to us for rewrite of what we proposed or for a fresh start on it?
I think they responded to your comments, Gene, that.
So there, I think that the.
I don't know if it was voted down or tossed back.
The idea is that the ordinance is not in effect, and I think you guys have the opportunity to massage it as necessary moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you're aware, a few projects underway. It's been noticed yesterday as well. Beginning very shortly, you'll see a little bit more activity on Beach Walker Drive as those projects, Ocean Pines, will begin construction in MUSC as well, advancing as well as Seafields. We anticipate those are on track for their anticipated completion dates. We have.
John, just for my information, what are those completion dates?
For MUSC, anticipated substantial completion, probably January of '26. So I think they are a little ahead of that timetable, but based on them being able to get all of their testing and staff and oriented, I'm still going to stick to that January '26 date. For Seafields, it's this fall. I can't remember if it's October or December, but they're aggressively still moving forward. The last note that I wanted regarding the workshop, so the pervious paving workshop that we're scheduled, we're actually going to try to combine that with the, with a stormwater management opportunity. Our stormwater management ordinance is in effect. I mean, we've been having some unclarity on how design teams and contractors respond to that, so we want to use that as another kind of educational opportunity for design teams with that stormwater management ordinance. Am I missing anything, Daniel, Petriya? All right, thank you. That's all.
Public comments? Commissioner comments? Sandy?
Down here? Nope.
Okay, thank you all very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?